Okay, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, November 9th, 2016. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. First, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being televised live on local Mashpee TV. Next, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just as for all.
All right. Okay, the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals currently consists of five board members and two alternate members. Tonight, we have three members absent, leaving us only four members total. Every petitioner is entitled to have five zoning board members hear their petition. As with every petition, in order for the petition to pass, you need four positive votes. So when there's five board members, you've got to have four positive votes, one negative vote, and the petition would still pass. Given that fact, you'll need all four members to vote for your petition in order for it to pass. So if you'd like, we can grant you a continuance till the next meeting when we have five board members. That'll be your choice, and you can just tell us when we call you. So sitting on tonight's first and all the hearings actually are two regular board members plus alternates Jim and Brad. So Brad, if you would read the first new hearing.
Opening the hearing on 36 Valley Road. Owner Sally A. Lewis requests a special permit under Section 174-45.4 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an accessory apartment above an existing garage located in an R5 zoning district map 42, parcel 4, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from October 26, 2016 hearings at the request of the owner, opened but not heard.
Okay. Do we have an email on the... Okay, why don't I read the email then? Okay, here's an email from Sally Lewis dated Tuesday, November 8th to Mary Ann Romero. And it says, "Dear members of the board, I Sally A. Lewis like to ask for a postponement, or a continuance really, till December 14th, 2016 concerning 36 Valley Road Mashpee accessory apartment. Thank you in advance, Sally A. Lewis." So, Jim, would you like to make a motion that we continue this?
Yes, I move that we continue this hearing until December 14th, 2016.
And that's for?
Sally A. Lewis, 36 Valley Road Mashpee concerning an accessory apartment.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Nothing to sign, right? Okay. And Brad, would you read the next new hearing?
Okay, opening the hearing on 304 Shore Drive. Owners John and Kathleen Tedesco request a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a bedroom addition with an enclosed bulkhead on property located in an R3 zoning district map 123, parcel 16, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from October 26, 2016 hearings at the request of the owner, opened but not heard.
Okay. Is somebody from 304? Hi, come right up if you would. And state your name and address for the record.
Home address?
Sure.
It's John Tedesco Jr., 16 Jefferson Road, Mansfield, Mass.
Okay, and it's regarding 304 Shore Road, right?
Yeah.
All right, if you would, just tell us exactly what you want to do.
A small addition to a bedroom, seven by three addition. The bedroom roughly, the bedroom roughly seven by eight, so then the rest of the addition is just with a, rather than having a metal door or a bucket, it's just an exterior vertical door.
A doghouse?
Yeah, basically like a doghouse type thing.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
All right, is this an L-shaped lot?
Very strange lot, yes, it is.
Wow.
Yeah, it's kind of very...
Does your lot also get on here where the shed is too?
It does, yeah. Yeah, because all behind all those houses.
So this section is like 45 feet wide? Does that look right?
Actually, I don't have a home, I'm sorry.
So this is all yours here?
Yep, it is.
And all up in a...
To the road, very strange lot, but Mr., I don't know if you're familiar with it. Mr. Kersner, he's a lawyer that kind of walked with the way back line of the...
You gotta have the microphone with you. No, you can carry it with you.
You take it right out.
Okay.
All right, so yeah, it's just an odd-shaped lot.
It is, it's very odd.
Okay, so the actual lot coverage currently is 12.4. Proposed addition, 168 square feet. Proposed lot coverage would be 13.5. No issues there. Certainly no issues from any setbacks. I don't see any problems whatsoever.
Yeah, it is quite a lot, 35 feet from the lot.
Okay, let's see if we have comments. Okay, from Conservation. This property is not within wetlands jurisdiction. Let's see, from Border Health, do we have anything? 36 Valley. Nothing on that one. All right, in the meantime, from Inspections Department. 304 Shore Drive. The area is zoned R3 and is within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high. The applicant is seeking a written finding under Article 5, 174 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a bedroom addition with an enclosed bulkhead. The board has to make the determination that this is a self-imposed hardship and if the applicant is making the structure more non-conforming. Question, is there habitable space within the existing garage? Okay, so for the record, there is no habitable space. Pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area, do you know what that means? Means if you're digging and all of a sudden you find an archaeological relic, bones, almost anything, stop.
Okay.
Follow the directions.
Go ahead.
Don't do anything.
All right.
So you have to stop what you're doing and follow those directions. So that's it from there. All right, do we have anything from DPW? No? Nope?
Actually, minimal digging, there's only three footings, not a full foundation.
Okay. Hopefully you won't hit any problems. All right. Did you find anything from Border Health? Because I don't have anything. I'm sure we got something right here.
Yeah, it says no comments.
Want to read it in?
It says no comment for 304 Shore Drive, no comment.
All right, yeah, why don't you just read it, so it's the email from...
Okay, the Board of Health comments on 304 Shore Drive says no comments.
And it was an email dated?
On October, Wednesday, October 19th, 2016 at 2:46 PM from Glenn E. Harrington.
And it was going to Mary Ann?
Going to Mary Ann Romero, yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
DPW?
Do we have anything on it?
It's on the school road.
That's 419.
I didn't see anything on it.
304 though, guess not.
No. 166 Wheeler and 419 Monmouth School on DPW. That's all I have.
That's all I have.
Did I miss something?
Nope.
Nope.
I created something.
Any questions or comments from anybody on the board?
Make a motion?
Well, let's ask the audience. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, would you like to make a motion?
Motion is made to approve or deny the written finding with the following conditions.
So we're going to make this to approve?
To approve. Okay. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General Laws 48, Section 6. Two, a certified plot plan, 304 Shore Road, Massachusetts, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Owner record, John Tedesco Jr., 16 Jefferson Road, Mansfield, Massachusetts, 02048. Applicant, John Tedesco Jr., 16 Jefferson Road, Mansfield, Massachusetts, 02048. Sheet number 1 of 1, date 9/22/16, DWG file, street. The street is 304 Shore Drive? And, let me find, scale?
Should say it right on there.
Yeah, let's see the scale. Sorry.
Scale is 1 to 20.
Yep.
One inch equals 20 feet.
As noted, approved by MC, checked by TS, drawn by MC, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, Summerfield Park, 800 Falmouth Road, Suite 301C, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Assessors information, parcel ID 123-16-0. No revision date. Signed by Matthew Costa, Matthew C. Costa, professional land surveyor, number 52282. Number three, floor plan entitled, existing conditions A1. Tedesco, 304 Shore Drive Mashpee, Mass. Drawn by Jodas and Sons, designers, builders, 307 North Main Street, Mansfield, Massachusetts. Scale 1/4 inch to 1 foot. Approved, drawn, PAJ, dated 9/22/16. Proposed layout A2, front elevation, left side elevation. A3, SEA elevations, A4. Okay? The board conditions this. Petition based on all department comments read into the record.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay. So, let's do some stamping here. Need a little length on this.
When you read the quote, one of the gentlemen was not here.
Okay. Now, give me one sec. Take care of this part first. All right, do we have another one of these?
Yeah.
The big ones?
Yeah.
All right, so let's go there. All right. It's a knife, isn't it? Two down. All right.
Mary Ann, why do you need so many? The distribution of, to them and the records and all that, is that it?
It's the government, that's why.
Yeah.
Got to keep all those people in Washington busy. Every signature gets worse. Oh, great. All right, uh, yep.
Okay, opening hearing on number 166 Wheeler Road. Owners Stephen D. and Donna Barber request a variance from the side yard setback under Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached 24-foot by 28-foot two-car garage on property located in an R5 zoning district map 49, parcel 9, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from October 26, 2016 hearings at the request of the petitioner, opened but not heard.
Okay. I'm not sure you were here when I made the announcement that there is only four board members here.
Okay.
And why don't I go over this with you, because you do have some rights here. Normally, well, every petitioner is entitled to have five zoning board members hear their petition. As with every petition, in order for it to pass, you must have four positive votes. Tonight, we've only got four members. Normally, with five, you could have four positives, one negative vote, and it would still pass.
I understand.
With only four, you need four positive votes. So you really have the right, if you'd like to postpone this, continue it till the next one, where there'd be, hopefully, five available.
Well, I'm just, I'm not asking for a lot here, so I'm just hoping to go forward and...
Okay.
I'll take my chances.
Gotcha. All right, if you would, just name and address for the record and tell us...
My name's Collins O'Connor Jr. I'm representing my friend and customer, Steve Barber and his wife. And what I propose to do is remove the shed in fabric building, which would alleviate, the shed's really encroaching, but I, what I want to do is use the 12-foot, ask for 13 feet on the left side, so that I can still use the driveway as a proper entrance. And the reason why we're putting that, we have a septic system, and we just don't want to put the garage in front of the house, and I don't think it's a major deal, so I'm just asking...
Okay. Have you, you've talked to the Border Health about the septic system in the driveway, correct?
I believe, I'm...
Because there's issues with the septic system being under a driveway.
Yeah, the septic system's like 10 foot four away, the leaching bed.
Okay, so, but is it in the middle of the driveway?
Yes. It's on the, it's on the edge, that's on the edge of the grass. We're not going to drive over the septic system.
Okay.
And we're going to, you know, basically vacate the shed and the fabric building, and we're not really adding a lot of square footage, and we're basically giving relief to that sidelines.
Okay. So the shed is disappearing, and that was like right on?
Yeah, 1 foot 8 off the boundary. And the thing is, down in this neighborhood, it seems like a lot of the houses are built. Some of them seem like they're built on other people's property. It's not out of cat, cat character what's going on here.
Yep. Yep. So it's going to be a, you're going to load the garage from the side, not from the front Wheeler, but from coming in and then loading on the side, correct?
Yeah, it'll, yeah, it'll be a little, a little on the tricky side, but that's what we'll do.
Okay. So the lot coverage is existing 8.45, proposed, including shed? I thought you were getting rid of the shed.
Yeah, we're getting rid of the shed, we can strike that, that's, that must be a mistake. That shed's gone.
So with the shed, it's 12.5, without the shed, it's less than 12.5?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll need to get that updated. I'll need an updated plan on this.
That's fine.
To fix all of that.
Yeah.
The fact that you're removing the shed, and that'll change the lot coverage.
Yeah, the shed's 10 by 120.
I like the fact that you're moving it 12 foot off the line.
I like that, I appreciate that, that's, that's more than all, that's more than we needed. It just makes it look nicer from the street aesthetically for the customer.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right, we've got some from different boards here, and one of them is the Border Health. Let's see what they have to say. 166 Wheeler Road. The property is not in Zone 2, so it is not restricted on number of bedrooms, except for the capacity of the septic system, which is good for four bedrooms. The property is required to have a septic inspection prior to building permit sign-off. No garage plans were provided, so I'm not sure if there is any habitable space above. If the space above the garage is finished, heated, says less than 70 square feet with privacy, then it, it can be considered the fourth bedroom. But you really can't, in a garage, have a bedroom.
There's not going to be any even storage in that, above that garage, it's going to be just an attic.
Yeah, you cannot have any bedrooms up there, no living space. We've gone through this over the last couple of months, and that's become an issue, so, yeah. So we want to put that...
Put an office up there? Or is that...
No.
You weren't there about to do that?
No.
Okay.
No. You put storage.
It would be like, it would match the house pitch, it would be like a six pitch roof.
Yep.
You wouldn't be able to stand up underneath that on top of the ceiling joist.
Yep. So that's part of the conditions.
Tell me exactly how to word it.
No living quarters.
No living quarters above the garage?
Right. No habitable space.
No habitable.
Yeah, light storage at most, which would have an access for the fire to burn.
Okay. Mary Ann, has, has the building department seen this?
Yes.
So they have no issue with that septic in the driveway? You see where it is? I'm assuming that's a circle within a circle? That's the access?
Yes, it's 10 feet, that's like a code, it's like, it's got to be 10 feet away, so it's 10 foot four, 10.4.
You see what I'm saying? I know you, you can't drive over a septic system unless you have a specifically made septic tank to be able to hold the weight.
Yeah, an HD tank, yeah, I understand.
Right. So that's my only concern, as long as, because I don't want to see you down near the end and they go, hey, wait a minute, all bets are off.
Right, we understand.
Okay.
Yeah. What about the comments?
Did I miss the comments? Because, okay. Well, that's the Border Health.
Yeah.
So let's see what Inspections has to say. All right, this is from the Inspections Department, dated October 31st, reference November 9th hearings. And, let's see, 166 Wheeler Road. The area is zoned R5 and is within the pre-contact archaeologically sensitive area listed as high.
I heard that, yeah.
The applicant is seeking a variance from the side yard setback under 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a detached 24 by 28 two-car garage. They are short 13 feet from the side lot line. Are the shed and fabric buildings both being demolished or relocated? Well, we know the answer to that. So they're going to need a variance of 13 feet from the side, and it's the, that's north, so it's going to be the southern sideline. 13-foot variance. So that's Inspections. We had Border Health.
DPW?
Conservation. All right, 166 Wheeler Road, and this is an email from Conservation to Mary Ann, and it's regarding 166 Wheeler Road. It's dated November 2nd, 2016. The proposed garage is outside of the wetlands jurisdiction. We have something from the DPW. Below the comments from Catherine Laurent, DPW, regarding 166 Wheeler Road. Okay, it says Wheeler Road is a town road. The above property has two existing paved driveways. Provided that there are no changes proposed to these driveways, no curb cut permit would be required from the DPW. So is there going to be any changes to the driveway?
No.
Okay. I do request that gutters and downspouts be installed on the proposed garage and that the downspouts be connected to a dry well, dry wells, to prevent any additional stormwater runoff from entering Wheeler Road. So that'd be part of the conditions.
I agree, yeah, not a problem.
Okay. I don't think I, did I miss anything? I've got no issues whatsoever, as long as you do what they ask regarding the curb cuts and the gutters on the...
Oh, well, that's, that's a piece of cake, that's normal.
Good. Any questions or comments, concerns? Anybody? Seeing...
Make a motion to approve?
Yep.
The variance with the following conditions. One, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a variance under Mass. General Law 48, Section 10. Two, site plan. Proposed garage for Stephen and Donna Barber, 166 Wheeler Road Mashpee, Massachusetts. Scale 1 inch equals 40 feet. Date 8/18/2016. Warwick and Associates, Inc., 63 County Road, Box 801, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, 02556. Telephone number 508-563-7777. Revision 9/1/2016. Drawn by GSL, date 8/18/2016. Checked by, who's this checked by?
Checked by... Is it on there?
No.
No, it isn't on there.
All right, then, that's good enough.
Okay. Sheet... Sheet one of two, P colon slash Land Projects, 2004 slash Barber in capital letters, D slash DWG slash Logulas, B A R B E R, P R 040 dot DWG, signed by Gary S. Labrie, professional land surveyor, number 40039. Three, the board issues a variance in the amount of 13 feet for the side setback.
Southerly side, right?
Southerly side netback, a setback. There'll be no habitual, habitable space above the garage, and gutters and downspouts will be connected from the garage to drywells.
Also, we're going to remove the shed and the fabric building?
Removing the shed and the fabric building.
And an updated plan?
And we need an updated plan.
With the...
We want the updated calculations of the shed, I see.
Right, right, and...
That's not a problem.
Yeah, so you want to change the verbiage to say, shed removed, fabric building removed, and then the new, the new percentage in square footage? So I'll need that as quick as you can get it, so I can sign it off.
I could have it, have it in there too.
Perfect. All right, is that it? Do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, sirs. Thank you for your help.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, that's what we need. All right, uh, wait a minute, so we're gonna stamp that.
Is there a requirement that we have him demolish the shed prior to coming in?
I don't think so.
No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
There's no house plans or anything to sign off? Do we have a letter on this? All right. All right, Brad, would you read the next two hearings?
Okay, opening the hearing on number 419 Monomoskoy Road. Owner Walter S. Whitman requests a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 124, parcel 68, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from October 26, 2016, hearings at the request of the attorney, opened but not heard. Opening the second hearing on number 419 Monomoskoy Road. Owner Walter S. Whitman requests a variance from the side yard setback under Section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district. Map 124, parcel 68, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from October 26, 2016, hearings at the request of the attorney, opened but not heard.
Okay, and I have a letter regarding 419 Monomoskoy Road, and it is actually an email from Kevin Corain, he's the attorney representing this particular petition, dated Wednesday, November 9th at 1:29 PM. It's to Marianne Romero, and it's regarding, again, Whitman, 419 Monomoskoy Road. And it says, "Marianne, given the board will only have four sitting members this evening, I request that this matter be put over to the next available hearing date. Thank you, Kevin. Kevin M. Corain, Esquia, Dunning, Corain, McNichols, and Garner, LLP. Pier box 560, 133 Falmouth Road, Suite A, Mashpee, Massachusetts." So why don't we accept that into the record? So, would you make a motion on both of these?
Okay, I move that the hearing, the hearings of 419 Monomoskoy Road, owner Walter S. Whitman, be continued till December 14th, I believe, meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That'll be for both of them. Perfect. Something to sign? All right, uh, bear with me one second. Take that. Okay, why don't we do other business first? And then we'll do the executive session afterwards. All right, so, Brad, would you read the first other business? All the way at the bottom.
Okay, other business. Make a motion to approve the 2017 year public hearing schedule.
That's a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next one?
Make a motion to approve the October 26, 2016, meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, before we move forward... Let me get my little sheet here. Excuse me. Okay. At this point, we're gonna close our regular meeting for this evening and ask everybody in the audience to leave the room, so the board can go into an executive session, talk about some pending litigation. I'll also ask that the TV part of this meeting be discontinued. So Dom, would you make a motion to close this meeting?
I make a motion, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night. Okay, let's...
Now...
Shut the mics off.